Good evening. This is Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020 meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, the Mickey Mouse T-shirt you bought on your last vacation, and you decided to wear tonight, and anything you intend or to or not to screen share with your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured and recorded forever and ever and ever, and may possibly line up as a YouTube video that will be shared amongst the This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all the members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. J T.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Janet Campbell. Janet Campbell.
Here.
Tom Sanford, here. We don't have our anticipated speakers yet, but we'll have them when they come. We'll do this abbreviated when they come onboard. With a quorum of the board, I call this meeting to order at 7:34 PM, Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board and is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of Corona-19 virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening on the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join into this meeting. Ground rules. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, or internal motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure that we capture accurate minutes. And for any reason, please wait till you are yielded the floor to state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note, each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. And now on with the show. We don't really have much on the agenda until the Senes come. So if anybody has, well, first of all, can I entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting?
I move that we accept the minutes from the last meeting.
9:8:20.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a roll call vote. J T. Hi. Hi, okay, excellent. Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Janet Campbell.
Hi.
Tom Sanford, hi. Unanimously accepted. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything or penetrating insights, comments, questions before we entertain the guys from down south?
I have several things we can talk about if you want.
Please enlighten us.
Did we get a letter from CMRPC? And if we didn't, we will, to determine who will be the delegate. A member of the Planning Board.
Yet.
Pardon?
I have not seen it yet.
I know the selectmen were thinking about appointing the alternate. Because I saw an email floating around about that.
And who's the alternate?
I don't think they've determined that.
Oh, is it going to be a member of the Planning Board?
No, the alternate usually is a selectman. And the delegate is a Planning Board member.
And what's the justification behind that?
To have the Planning Board member be the delegate?
No, to have the select person usurp the position.
Some towns have the delegate as the selectman.
Really?
Yeah. And some of the big, some of the big towns end up with multiple delegates.
I could see that.
Based on population.
I can't hear you, Jay.
What does the delegate do?
Jim.
Something's wrong with my computer.
How come we can't hear him? Can he hear us?
You whisper quiet. Can you hear us, Jay?
Yeah.
That's better.
Hear you.
So I'm happy to continue to serve.
Well, I would encourage that just for continuity. I can't imagine what they, I don't know. I don't know what they think sometimes.
You can't what?
I can't imagine what they're thinking that, I mean, because most of the stuff with that organization has to do with planning and, you know, grant writing and things like that for municipal purposes, right? Planning purposes, mostly?
They're getting big time into economic development now.
Okay.
And they do a lot with transportation. And they're becoming the wing of the state government that is distributing a significant amount of aid to towns for border health work, particularly towns that are unassociated like we are with a regional border health.
Right. They don't control the money flow though, right? They just recommend?
The Planning Commission?
Yeah.
The Planning Commission, like with DLTA, we get $280,000 and then people apply to us for use of those funds for studies and stuff, and then we make a decision as to how it's going to be allocated amongst the towns. And they've just applied for a $2.5 million economic development grant, so their staff has increased now to over 35, so they're
Really?
Yeah, they're really. We had a meeting to determine the expenditure of the remaining DLTA money, the district local technical assistance stuff. And the executive director said that a couple RPAs were having trouble spending all their funds. And we said, well, we'll take it because we could, I mean, the commission's spending, we could spend twice as much, easy.
Sure.
And almost every one of the 40 towns in the region is benefiting now, whether it's green community grants or housing or you know, on and on and on. I mean, I can't believe the list of things. They've got about 12 grants that they're working on right now, so they're doing, it's such a different organization than it was even 10 years ago.
Well, I mean, I would support you to be, you to continue in the role as our delegate.
You're looking for an alternate, right?
No, the selectmen appoint the alternate. From amongst the selectmen. And, you know, so that means that if, sometimes I've gone along with the selectmen because there's some topic at the quarterly meeting that makes sense for them to attend, you know, like work on the census or the transportation improvement program and stuff like that, so.
So their MO is not to replace, their MO is to augment?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. So for the Senes, they're going to have a presentation given by that other guy?
What other guy?
There's a consultant, right?
A developer who wants to speak to the possibility of building townhouses.
You've had a similar reaction that I did.
Two, two other items. Margaret wants to know if the Planning Board intends to move forward at the Fall Special Town Meeting with all the zoning by law amendment articles and the Scenic Roads Act article you had proposed prior to the annual town meeting. If I go, what can I do? I can Do you still see me when I do this?
You're shaky, but we see you.
What are you going to do?
I'm gonna try to figure out what articles we submitted. You remember?
I mean, I can look them up.
Excuse me, this is Margaret through the chair. I'll see if I can, if I'll see if I can locate.
Margaret's snuck in.
Down here.
I'm just, I'm just listening in. Let me see if I can find them. Hold on for a minute.
I'm looking for them too here. Oh, that's ridiculous. How did that happen?
Can you guys hear me?
It would have been way back in
February, February?
Yeah, or some of the
Okay, I've got them and I can share my screen if you'd like.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
All right, one moment. And
I'll stop looking.
Okay, just let me share my screen. Here they are. So they show us Articles 19 through 26, although the article numbers are not specific, but those are the, those were the proposed articles. Can you see them okay?
Yeah.
Now, did we ever determine whether we can modify the Scenic Roads Act to allow the selectmen simply to deal with all the driveway permits?
I have not delved into that in detail, although I've printed the Scenic Roads Act and I can certainly ask Town Council.
So that would, I mean, we would like to do that because otherwise we hold the hearing and then you hold the hearing and we hold up people looking for just a curb cut for an extended period.
I can look into whatever you'd like on these, on these proposed amendments.
We want to go ahead with the medical marijuana and adult use marijuana.
Okay.
I'm gonna go back and look for text. I I can't remember what all these were about. Janet remembers, but I don't.
I don't remember why I get a bit of a chair anymore.
Now, how do I do this?
I think we should be prudent and only do the ones we really absolutely need to do.
Right.
So we don't make it longer than we need to be, especially if we're going to be standing outside.
We're trying to avoid that.
Would you have a tentative, so Margaret, I suppose what we're saying is that 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, there were nine, we'd probably be more likely to choose something like four or five.
Okay.
The non-controversial ones.
Like medical marijuana and adult use marijuana.
Speaking of medical, speaking of marijuana, adult use marijuana, just to give the Planning Board an update, C3 Industries, the company that the Select Board executed a host community agreement with is proceeding with its application to the Cannabis Control Commission, so they are still on track.
How long does that usually take?
Oh, that's gonna take at least six months. There is a backlog at the CCC.
Okay.
But it's good that they're getting in the queue.
Yeah.
And for what parcel was that for, proposed for?
64 Banner.
Oh, okay. So they've overcome their having to access it through a different town, huh?
That, this is a different applicant. This is for a retail establishment. And they would be entering right from 64 Banner. I guess there's an existing facility there that they are leasing 5,000 square foot portion of. The other one was a cultivation facility that they would have had to enter through Hudson.
Yeah, the one that I'm thinking of on Banner doesn't banner across the part of that corner.
They come from Marlboro.
Marlboro, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. And into the town, yes. All right. I didn't know that there was a hurdle with them, actually. That never really came up.
Well, when they talked to us, one of the things that we asked was, did they get, you know, I mean, I can't imagine DCU would want all of that traffic going right through the corner of their parking lot. I don't know. And then, you know, you have a county issue too, because you have Worcester County versus Middlesex County.
Yeah.
Issue.
Honestly, Tom, that never came up in the community outreach meeting, meetings with the board, anything. DCU actually didn't even communicate with the board. They didn't appear at the community outreach meeting, so
Maybe they weren't
They didn't ask me to attend the meeting.
Abudders all had to be, the abutting communities all had to be notified for that meeting, so it's interesting.
May I have my screen back? I don't, I can't seem to negotiate my screen while you're up.
There you go.
Oh, there I go. Good, good, thank you. There I am. And the other item is application for a grant that Margaret submitted today that she'll tell you about.
Please do. Okay, that is called, it's a MassDOT grant called Shared Streets and Spaces. This all came about because of COVID in order to increase pedestrian and bicycle access to restaurants in particular and decrease traffic. It was really to promote business at restaurants during the hardest times of COVID. We're starting to come back now, but today was the deadline to submit this grant application. And so Tim and Chief Galvin, Dave Smith, the Highway Superintendent, Ian McKelwee from CMRPC and I got together and we put together an application that, for a pilot program to reroute traffic flow on Carter and Woodward going from two-way to one-way traffic in order to expand sidewalk access and increase pedestrian safety to, you know, to access the cultural facilities, the church, and the general store across Central Street. So there would be flashing pedestrian crossing beacons and signage and we're going to have, well, if we are awarded the grant, we're going to have water barricades that create kind of a kind of an artificial sidewalk area to see how the pedestrian flow works. And so the grant application was for about $39,000. And towns have been, towns have received the award. There really hasn't been much controversy over it. So we're very hopeful that we're going to get it for a pilot program. Some of the equipment that we've requested in the application would be permanent. We'd be able to purchase it and it would be ours. And others like the mobile signboards on trailers to alert commuters of the one-way traffic would be rented. So it really is to see if rerouting the traffic to one way and creating sidewalk and bicycle access on those streets is a permanent possibility.
What did you say?
We shall see how that goes.
Did you say Whitney?
No, Carter and Woodward.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Carter, it's the triangle essentially.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
That would be cool.
Be interesting to see how it works out if we're able to get that grant.
Be hard to change people's
What, you mean like one-way at Market Basket?
Exactly. Remember when we did the town offices and the guy that refused to go in the out and out the in because he could do it for years and years and years and he continued to do it?
That might change again with a parking lot redesign.
Yeah, he did. He refused to do it. He would go in the exit, drive in the exit.
Wonder how he's making out in the center of Hudson then.
So I found the articles.
Oh, good.
The first one, this change would allow residential care facilities for not more than six patients in a limited business district and require a special permit in the residential and agricultural or multiple dwelling districts. So that was a change to the table.
Yeah, and that was in reaction to the proposal on
River Road.
River Road West.
Yep. The next one was, it would make the Planning Board the sole appointing authority of the Economic Development Committee and allow the number of did we do that at annual town meeting?
Yes, you did. That's all set.
Done, yeah. The next one, allow the selectmen to include decisions concerning the Scenic Road Act with their review of applications for a driveway permit when the application involved a single-family residential lot, eliminating the need to hold an additional review by the Planning Board.
That makes sense.
That's simple and it might make sense to include it just because it would speed things up. The next one is a long list of parcels to be changed to the Agriculture, Recreation, Conservation District. I suppose we could pass on that just because it's got so many pieces. It would take a while. And it's not life-threatening. The next one would change would require a home-based contracting business owner in the residential agricultural district to reside on the property. I suppose we should do that.
That was at the request of ZBA.
Yeah. And the next one would clarify the means of determining gross vehicle weight for vehicles operating as part of the home-based contracting business.
That was another one by them.
The next one would change would allow any proposed square footage to be included in the calculation for total area of a dwelling in which an in-law apartment is proposed, would allow any proposed square footage. So if you're going to make an addition, the new square footage is what the calculation for 35% is based on. We can think about that one, I guess. The next one, the change would allow the Planning Board to review modifications to a common driveway that are proposed after the initial layout has been accepted and provides for a public hearing if the change is deemed substantial. That's probably important. And then the last one was this change would set a limit on the number of retail marijuana establishments allowed in town. So
Can we leave that till the next time?
Was, how do we determine how that was going to be calculated? Was it a percentage of the liquor store licenses?
We just said two.
Just said two?
Which is what I think we would have been allowed anyway, maybe. Margaret knows.
I think, I think that's correct because it's aligned with the number of liquor licenses that are allowed.
Right.
So you're looking through the chair, so you're looking at five of the total proposed that might come to special? The medical adult use marijuana, the Scenic Roads Act, the home-based business residency requirement, the home-based business gross vehicle weight, and common driveways? Does that sound about right?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, if, yeah, I would say yes at that, and then we'd let the ones for putting them into agricultural recreation for next spring.
Right. And if you get overburdened, you can always say to us
Chop them.
Help us out. And we could look at those and maybe eliminate.
Okay, you just, I mean, if you determine your priorities, I'll I'll wait, I'll wait to hear from you definitively, but we'll plan on these five for now. And you can kind of guide us with regard to your priorities, so.
When are you going to open the warrant?
The board would not be opening the warrant until I believe October 26th. We're looking at a date of no earlier, I don't believe any earlier than November I want to say 28th, the weekend after Thanksgiving, which is not a good possibility. We're looking more at like Saturday, December 5th or Monday, December 30th, somewhere in that, in that range.
Yeah.
And you're flying everybody from the town down south where we'd be warm?
We're gonna have to go someplace warm because I'll tell you, it's not going to be ideal for an outdoor town meeting in November or December.
Be much controversy.
Well, it would keep things moving along though, wouldn't it?
It certainly would. You could tell them they have to take their glove off when they raise their hand to be counted.
And no metal chairs.
All right, well, just keep, you know, just keep us posted as you move forward. We'll we'll plan on at least these five and you can decide whether or not you want to proceed with them, okay? Thank you for weighing in on that.
Thank you.
Our friends aren't here yet, huh?
They are. Christopher Senni is now in attendance and John, would you like me to promote them?
Yes, please.
Hello?
Good evening. John's still muted.
Yeah, let me see if I can.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Chris.
Okay, good.
John, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, Tom.
Yes, I can, thank you. And I think we need to call Matt because we're having
Yes, I can. Thank you. And I think we need to call Matt because we're having difficulty logging on. And then what I ended up doing is Googling and I went on the town's website and went through everything there. So Matt, would you mind if I just call him on the phone and just let him know how to log on?
Sure.
Matt just showed up now. Let me promote him.
Matt's showing up, okay.
Right back.
What happened to Jay?
Can you hear me yet?
We can hear you, Jay.
Oh, I think my internet connection is my problem.
Can't see you though.
Well, let me turn it on. Can you still hear me when I have that video on?
Yes.
Oh, all right, well. I don't know what's going on tonight with it.
Okay, Matt needs to start his video and unmute himself.
John, what's your last name for the minutes?
He's muted.
My name is Burns, last name Burns, B U R N S. And thank you, name of our company is Black Brook Realty.
Is Matt?
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Matt, how are you? Okay, so before we start, I have to read a little notification. So, and I won't read the whole thing because we've already done it on our side. So, but bear in mind that this meeting's being recorded. We're participating by video conference. So what you say will be recorded. Anything you share on your computer screen will be captured and recorded. We will, any business that we have that requires a vote will be taken by a voice vote. With a roll call and by the members of the planning board. And we're doing this because the governor has allowed us through his executive order. And rea, and reaction to the COVID issues that we're having. The only other ground rules, there's only us, so it doesn't really pertain to too much. But you know, if you're not speaking, it's wise to put yourself on mute. When you speak, speak clearly so we can capture your voice or your thoughts and comments for minutes. So they can be recorded accurately. And then, you know, please wait to be yielded the floor and state your name. And that's about it. So just so those are the ground rules, everybody knows. Everybody's participating on a Zoom platform and it's due to the COVID nineteen and that makes it legal for us. So. Good evening and Christopher, would you like to give us an overview of what we're going to be hearing tonight?
Sure. Thank you very much. It's very nice to be back in front of you. I would like to give you a brief update on River Bridge and then introduce you to John Burns and explain. That John is someone who has an interest in the remaining developable parcel at, at River Bridge. Our lot nine B, which sits between the cafe and the daycare center. River Bridge has done okay during the COVID nineteen crisis. Most of our tenants and businesses did close down. The hotel remained open. But its occupancy dropped significantly from the seventy percent range average down to twenty to thirty percent. Those numbers are starting to come back up. Our daycare center closed for several months, but is now back open with reduced staff and reduced students. The cafe, the liquor store part of the cafe stayed open continuously, but sales were weighed down. And the cafe went to pickup only and continues to serve just takeout food. And those numbers are starting to grow a bit as well. The banks that we work with were helpful. They deferred some of the interest in principal payments. And I think all in all, so long as we're not headed for some additional new setback, we've done pretty well. I think probably the most difficult thing for us is that we had to build the full water and sewer system at River Bridge, which was quite costly. In order to open the hotel. And so we've been under, underutilized there and it costs a lot of money to manage the, the water system. So we're very anxious to see the, the apartments get occupied. The lease-up of the apartments initially slowed way down when the crisis was at its worst in March and April. But has picked back up and as of now, eighty-eight of the two-hundred-and-four apartments are leased. Which is forty-three percent. And sixty-three of the units or thirty-one percent of them are actually occupied with, with tenants living at River Bridge. I believe that we've generated only a small number of, of schoolchildren out of the residents that have. Chosen to live at, at the apartments. So I, I think the, the school impact from the two-hundred-and-four apartments is going to be less than what was projected in the original fiscal impact study. We are in the process of having a new study done. The Board of Selectmen commissioned the same company, Community Opportunities Group. That did the initial fiscal impact analysis on River Bridge in two thousand nine and, and did an update in two thousand thirteen. They are now doing for the town a new update. Taking a look at the, the actual values that we've brought into the community and the tax revenues being realized and expected from those. And the actual costs in all respects, police and fire and ambulance and school. And general municipal costs of, of having River Bridge here in the community. And the first phase of that feasibility study was completed and now the second phase is being undertaken. And by about the end of the year, that study should be completed and we should be able to know. After much of the development, what does it look like for the town in terms of? Is River Bridge a net positive or is it a net negative for the town? We expect it to be positive by a considerable margin because we think the values of the real estate that we actually brought are higher. And the costs are more manageable than expected. Also, we didn't know we would attract a hotel, but the hotel comes with a six-point-two-five percent room tax that goes directly to the town. So we are looking forward to having a new fiscal impact analysis. That is part of a process that Matt and I are trying to undertake to, to put in place a sort of. Wrap-up of our development activities, especially if we have found a way to put our last lot to productive use. So we're considering approaching different boards in town with a set of changes to, to our development agreement. That would really represent wrapping up the project. As you know, we, we still owe the town mitigation payments for public safety of a hundred thousand dollars a year for five years, beginning this November. And we also had promised the town to widen the bridge over Northbrook. And to make certain other improvements to some of the transportation areas of town. So we hope that as we get ready for a, a fall or winter town meeting, River Bridge might have. One or more warrant articles on the ballot to be discussed at town meeting. One of them is the request we wanted to give you a preview of tonight. And that is, we would like this board to consider a possible amendment to the village overlay district. Allowing lot nine B to be used for more residential. We've already built two-hundred-and-four apartments that was developed by NRP Group. And those apartments are now really taking shape and we have a pretty good handle on what those are, are like. We have tried very hard to interest commercial tenants in the area between the cafe and the daycare center. We pursued several restaurants to no avail and we've had several brokers list the property. And as you know, there, there are just times and situations where commercial doesn't really come into an area. Pure Hockey sat, sat empty for, I think, nine years. And some of the big box buildings around the corner are still empty. And we just have not succeeded in attracting the smaller retail establishments to come into, to River Bridge at our final location. So we've taken a look at other possible uses. We have built quite a bit of, of retail though. I don't know, you may recall that when we first got approval in two thousand nine. We were allowed to create one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand square feet of commercial. And we have already created one-hundred-and-one thousand. In the hotel, the, the cafe, liquor store, daycare center, the gas station. And that number of a hundred-and-one thousand doesn't include the gas pumps. Which are not counted as square footage, but are a big investment and, and Noria Energy pays. Real estate taxes based on the value of the whole property, not just the thirty-five-hundred square foot convenience store. Also, there is a pad remaining in front of the hotel, which certainly will be developed as commercial. At some point, we've been trying to attract a restaurant there or perhaps two users there, a restaurant and retail. That has been site planned by this board for five thousand square feet. As a practical matter, we can only park about twenty thousand square feet on lot nine B. What I mean is we don't have enough parking to build more than that, even though we still would have some more square footage under that total cap of a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand square feet. So what we're talking about tonight is not building that last twenty thousand square feet of commercial. But putting it to a different use. And what first came up as a suggestion from NRP Group, the apartment developer. Is would we sell it to them so they could build town homes for rent? To be added and made a part of, of the Rockwell. And we talked about that for a while, but after COVID nineteen, they decided they had, they had, their plate was full and they were not interested in doing that. So we began to talk to some brokers about whether there might be an interest in lot nine B, which is three-point-seven acres. For town home development and to our surprise, three or four prospective developers came along and, and expressed great interest in it. And we have entered into a purchase and sale agreement with John Burns, who's here tonight. And I'll ask him to introduce himself and his company. And the purchase and sale agreement is fully contingent on a rezone at town meeting. And the contract is very clear that what we've just contracted to do is not presently permitted under the zoning bylaw. But it's something we think might be of great value. If we put twenty thousand square feet of retail on lot nine B, it may take us many years to do that. And it would have a certain value that would be taxed at the commercial rate. If we could put more residential units there, it would have a much, much higher taxable value. It would be taxed at the residential rate, but it would have a, a high value. And it would be helpful to the River Bridge Association, Inc., which is our owners association that owns the wastewater and public water supply systems. Because it would use a lot of water and would help make that non-for, not-for-profit water district. Profitable or, or, or not negative as it is today. So from our point of view, we would like to see a good water user on lot nine B. We've tried very hard to get a restaurant or a brewery or, or some other type of user that would use a lot of water. And would fulfill the promise we have to the town of bringing in even more commercial. But we would like to at least introduce the idea to the community. That there is another use out there. The market is supportive of this concept. And I know that. We had conceived of River Bridge as having as much as a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand square feet of retail. But we seem stuck and we don't want lot nine B to, to stay vacant. And this may be a user that could be put into place that would be very tasteful. It might provide a little bit of a height. Gradation from the three-story down to the street level. And I think you'll, you'll see when you get to know John Burns and the projects he's been involved in. That these are very attractive communities that I think would add a lot of value here and would, would round out River Bridge. So I'm happy to answer any questions about my update or other things at River Bridge. But I would like to introduce John and ask him to say a little bit about his company and his vision for, for lot nine B.
Good evening. If I may, I guess where, my name is John Burns and. And I've been doing real estate development now for six years, maybe a little bit longer. And it's a family-owned company. We primarily, it was out of Hopkinton and we're temporarily owned Sutton right now. Actually, it's interesting, what interested me in Berlin was not only the town, but also the, the concept that, you know, Kristen. It's almost like a mixed use development and, you know, with a little bit of commercial, the apartments and so forth. And I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with SPAGs. And when SPAGs got developed a couple of years ago, we were chosen as the developer to do condominium portion of that. And, you know, there's Whole Foods there, there's just restaurants there. Obviously, it was pre-COVID. And then there's multiple apartments. So we did very well with that. We also are now involved with up in Salem, New Hampshire, we were chosen. We had some competition to, to build out the ninety-six condominiums there and that's. It's over a million square feet of commercial. There's, I think, nine-hundred and some odd apartments. There's a hotel, restaurants and so forth. So we've had a lot of experience doing this here and with the ninety-six units that were developed are in the process of being built. During the process, we learned that some of the units, we wanted to change some of those so that they were more attractive to. Lack of better word, an older buyer, meaning first-floor masters. So we just went into the planning board there back about a week and a half, maybe two weeks ago. And we got unanimous approval on the first night, the first meeting. So they, they actually really liked the floor plans, the architecture and so forth. We listened to what they wanted. And the architect, you can say it will be the same architect that we'll be using in Berlin. His name is Jack Sullivan. And when I happen to be going through the process with Chris and Matt, I mentioned his name. And maybe we're all getting old, but you know, Chris and Matt had remembered them from years ago that they actually used their services. You know, so we've done that. I've also taken over some other developments in two thousand and ten. When other developers have made it through the downturn, one of which is, and I don't know that quite butts Berlin, but it's in Harvard. And they had a condominium development. It was only fourteen units. We've done other ones. Built in Hopkinton, Shrewsbury, Sutton. Built in the state of New Hampshire, Maine. So we'll look in here and do something that will fit in with the town. And one of the things that also was very interesting when I was going through this process is in the Matt and Chris is that. This is almost like the end of their development there in Berlin and they wanted, as well as I did, to make sure that this is done properly. So that's essentially my vision. I was hoping that we would have had some plans here this evening, but we just wrapped up the purchase and sale. Agreement at the end of last week and I'm very hopeful that we will have something for you within the next two weeks. The primary reason we didn't had is that a lot of the utilities have already been put on site. And, you know, meaning the water, sewer, the gas and electric and so forth. So we are using the same architect that Chris and Matt used to work around that to do the layout of the homes. We'd like to have decent landscaping around there and so forth. And I, I think you'd be very happy with what we have. In terms of like my background, again, I've been doing that. I volunteer my time at, you know, different organizations. I just am chairman of the Board of Trustees to hospital. I'm on this entity called the National State College Building Authority, which essentially finances a lot of the state universities and comprehensive colleges. A number of the boards that I have them on. So I appreciate the shit that was you from a perspective as they appreciate. You know, not paying with your positions, I believe you are. So I respect your time and approval process. With that, certainly open to any questions. I'm always very open and honest and if anything like asks me, please feel free to.
Tim, Tom, can I ask him a question?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Oh, this is Janet. What's the name of the street in Harvard you had yours on?
It's old. It's old. Almost a funny town. So I'll tell you how you get there. When you get off the highway, it is, I believe, it's exit twenty-eight. Stop sign where there's the country store. It's old Harvard Road. I just get the old Harvard Road. So we get to that country store that's there. I want to say it's the number fourteen, there's a specific name for the road there. We completed that in two thousand and fourteen. So look up and get that back to you.
It's on a hillside?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, I know it. I know the.
And it was started by somebody else, an architect out of in Andover and North Andover. And he didn't make it through. And, you know, and that was in two thousand. I actually purchased it in two thousand and eleven. It gets complicated when you have to purchase something when somebody hasn't gone through everything. It worked very well. We I've got Tom Planner's name at the time, she was very good to work with.
How many units are you proposing for River Bridge?
We're in the process of trying to figure that out right now, but we're somewhere between in the area of twenty-four to thirty, yes, general numbers. And a lot of that's going to be contingent upon where the utilities are, because I believe that they were installed based on what the commercial location of the buildings will be. And now we will be looking at something different. And so it acts in the general area, somewhere around there. And they'd be townhouse style versus what we know as garden style, which so we're looking at townhouses and it would have garages.
Two-bedroom?
Probably two bedrooms, yes. You know, it's a very interesting question, because you know, the I believe that there's a market out there right now for first-time home buyers that can, you know, quote, afford something in the three to low fours. That's around the price range. It's sad to say that's affordable these days, but the building costs have skyrocketed with COVID. We have probably since March, put under agreement between twenty-five and thirty homes, condominiums, if you will, because that's primarily what we do. And our biggest issue is trying to get materials in a timely manner. So we're trying to go after that market where there's early thirties to mid-thirties, if you will, professionals. The access is fantastic right there. And that's the market we're looking for right now.
So your average square footage is going to be like six fifty to seven hundred square feet?
Probably bigger. It's probably in the fourteen, fifteen hundred square feet.
Cover more than twenty thousand square feet?
I'm sorry?
You're going to cover more than twenty thousand square feet?
I'm not sure of that answer just yet, but it would be basically, you know, we're looking at a footprint that would be round numbers about a, you know, keep in mind that the second floor won't be as, you know, although it will be bigger, the first floor takes out a garage out of that footprint. So there'd be more space than the second floor. If I remember correctly, the ones we're looking at is the first floor excluding the garage space would be in the, you know, six fifty range. And then the upstairs would be about eight hundred square feet somewhere in there.
So how tall are we talking for the units?
Oh, it would be probably, let's see, one, nine, eighteen, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, thirty.
You know, and I say that because we'd like to do a decent pitched roof instead of a low pitched roof. I think it would fit in better. It's in town. So, you know, we're looking at a foot off the ground and then eight foot first floor, another foot, eight foot for the second, and then a third floor back, if you will.
Right. We were just, I was just, the reason I'm asking those questions is that we were entertaining, you know, a sort of a stepped affair to sort of disguise the, you know, higher buildings that are in the back. These are going to be closer to the street. So, you know, you're going to be, the impact is going to be there. So it's going to be important to see what those, the outside exterior elevations look like, you know, and see what that impact is going to be to the visual. That's going to be, you know, that you're proposing for that area.
I think it'll be interesting. It's when I was going through the discussions with Chris and Matt, one of the concerns we had is, you know, it's just my opinion, but I don't believe that traffic's going to get any less as we all progress and time passes by. So we were looking at what do we do for landscaping between, you know, if you will, the rotaries to rotaries so that it can, you know, give some privacy to the condominiums and then put the units behind those. So we're kind of aware of what, you know, you're discussing there and how this is situated around there. So Mike, I didn't look at those buildings, but I'm guessing that those are somewhere in the probably fifty-foot-high range.
The ones in back?
Certainly, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. But that was okay, because it was going to be softened by, like, see the height of the daycare. Any of the commercial buildings would probably only no more than a story and a half or so. So that there would have been a, you know, a gradual rise into that mass that's in the back. So that's why I was asking the question.
Okay. Thank you. I'll keep that, you know, I'll mention that to Waterman, who's with, we're doing it in the Architecturals. And I haven't, you know, really worked, you know, with your town before. But one of the things, for instance, when I mentioned to you in the town of Salem that we're able to get through unanimously in one planning board meeting, part of that was is that we had access to, you know, the town planner, who actually liked the plans in between meetings instead of us. I realize everything has to be public, and I'm not trying to avoid that. But if we can discuss what you people like and don't like and show it to you and say, all right, we like this and we don't like this. It's that you just made, that's extremely helpful. We're going through it and it's been fun. And that's why we got through in one meeting. We essentially listened to what the town planner wanted. So your feedback is appreciated.
You can listen to Matt and Chris. We're pretty vocal. In a good way, right?
In a good way. Absolutely.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Not till I see anything.
I have another question. Are we talking any affordable units?
You know, it's interesting. I'll let Chris, Chris, do you want to approach that one first, or me?
No.
We might make a pitch for no affordable. And it would be based on what we've accomplished. We have arranged for the town to get credit for eighty-four affordable units, which have now been officially added to the town subsidized housing inventory. Eighty-four units divided by two hundred and four apartments is forty-one percent. So at our project, our residential project, in terms of credit, forty-one percent of the units are credited as affordable to the town. If you added, let's say, twenty-eight townhomes, and you still have those credit for those eighty-four units and you divided it into two hundred and thirty-two total units, it's thirty-six percent. So even if you absorbed twenty-eight townhomes with no affordable units, still, River Bridge in its entirety has provided thirty-six percent of its units as qualified affordable. There are only twenty-one that are leased at affordable rates. But the town is getting, has gotten credit for eighty-four. So because the margin we created is so great and it's gotten the town well up over fifteen percent of its housing stock qualified as subsidized housing inventory, we're hoping we might benefit from what we have accomplished and let John bring these units to market at a market price. Because if we were to have, say, ten percent affordable, which would be three units, those three have to be brought to market at considerably lower price. And therefore, John would likely have to aggregate that lost revenue over the market rate unit. So their price goes up a little bit. And all of these are more affordable than large, single-family homes. So over on the one side, we're considering making a pitch to the town to accept no affordable and let all of these be sold at market and resold at market. However, we appreciate that this will be viewed somewhat separately as a new component of River Bridge. And we understand that we might be told by either the planning board or the voters that we want this to carry its own weight on the affordable housing front. So we understand that. But I think the numbers may be favorable here. And I would at least like an opportunity to make that pitch, that maybe none of these should be sold as officially affordable units.
Well, listen.
Okay. That's all I ask.
Did you tell us what the expected sale price would be?
Of the affordable units?
No, no, market rate units.
Townhomes.
We're looking at the high threes to low fours. And the reason there's a variation in there, quite frankly, is lumber prices have skyrocketed. Our price has doubled in a matter of like two months. And, you know, and then you're looking at there's protection that an end unit is more desirable than a middle unit. So, you know, the middle units would probably go for less money on that. And if I could just add to Chris's comments, I'll come back if I didn't answer that on the affordable. I have done a number of affordable homes in our developments. I just finished one. It was a fifty-two law single-family subdivision. We had thirteen homes. And it took us about eight years to get rid of the thirteen. And the biggest part was is getting them, one, to qualify, meaning they have the money, or their parents gave them the money, because it can only come from certain people from the town. And then the second biggest one was getting them to have a good credit score so that they could afford the mortgage. It's not, there's a misconception among some people that this is like a special aid, if you will, where I can just go to the federal government or to the state and they would give me the money. That's not it. And it's, you know, they're very, very hard to sell. And as Chris said, we would, if there was affordable component, we would have to go up on the price to make that negative. We can give you an idea on that one there. And I think the numbers would be similar, maybe in Berlin. For the bedroom, it was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And we were selling the same home at about four seventy-five round numbers. So you have to make that difference up somewhere. You simply can't sell it at a hundred and eighty and you lose money. So that's all we would love to have in that equation.
Any other comments or questions by board members?
We would like to come back in two weeks, if you're having a meeting in two weeks.
Yep.
And by that time, we expect to have a rough site plan of how these townhomes would lay out on lot nine B. And I think, John, you're going to have an elevation to show of what the units will look like and the floor plan, I believe.
Okay.
So we'd like to get more into the details in two weeks. So we'd like to be put back on your agenda.
Okay. Eight o'clock work?
It's a good time for us.
Okay.
What's the date?
Yeah, eight PM. And I think, what is it, the eighth? Thirteenth.
Is that Friday?
No, ten thirteen.
It's three weeks.
Yeah. Because we meet the second Tuesday of the month. Yeah.
That, that. So that gives us actually an extra week to get these plans put together.
Right.
And the sixth is my thirty-fifth wedding anniversary. So you may have just indirectly bailed me out.
Thirty-fifth?
Thirty-fifth, yes. So if you said the sixth, I may have to check with senior management on that one.
The, most of the questions I had got answered, so that was good. The, if it's possible to create a view in one of your elevations that gives us a sense of
Buildings behind.
Impact on the structures behind the apartments from the street view, that, I think that would be helpful, because that's what Tom was talking about. We're trying to get a handle on that. That may be a little too much to ask for three weeks, but if it's possible, that would be great.
I can get something that you'll really like. I did something like that for some of the developments. I will work on that. I think I can have something that you'll like, it's very visual. Not saying you'll like the plans, but you'll like the visual that's presented, how it is presented. We basically have something where you can, it's almost like you're walking through the development, but it's animated. It's not going to show like this animated person and it shows the buildings and so forth. And it initially showed from the aerial view as well. So I will mention that. It's very effective.
Good. Perfect.
Does NRP speculate as to what they think might happen with additional units being tied down between now and the end of the year? I know, I think you've suggested that it's now is a slower time and most of the activities probably passed. But you're up to eighty. It seems like that's a higher number. What'd you say, eighty-eight, right? Eight are under lease and sixty-three are occupied. They have, they do expect it to slow a bit, but they are projecting a hundred and twenty-five leased by the end of the year.
Wow.
So it will be at a slower pace than August and September. But it, I don't think it's going to stop at any time. I think it will, it will keep going. And then I think the first of the year brings another more active period.
Why are they leased and not occupied?
Oh, it just means people haven't moved in yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a two-week period or so between when a lease gets signed and people move in. But are people interested in one of the units that isn't completed yet, too? I don't know how much lead time they allow or how much in advance of units being ready that they start to take leases. You know, we're not allowed to still be building in a, in a building where someone is living. So a building has to be done and CO'd. So I think it moves along at a pretty fast clip. So I don't think the delay between lease-up and occupancy is that the unit is being readied. I think it just takes a while for people to move in. I wondered if there was interest in one of those, that back corner unit that, is that the last one that's going to be, the one in the southeast or whatever? Yes, the one closest to the treatment plant will be the last building occupied. It's also close to the river and the meadow. It's a good treatment plant now. It doesn't have any odors. It's a nice location. They're all nice locations. I don't know if you've had a chance to either drive down or take a walk around the village, but it is such a lovely setting. The eighty-six acres of open space that we protected around it makes this the most wonderful atmosphere to be living in. And in fact, if you go on the N R P website for the Rockwell, I think their opening picture is a guy in a, in a kayak. Because they're, they're taking advantage of the Asabed River and we've now cleared a canoe launch and a kayak launch that was approved by the Conservation Commission. And actually, as we go through meetings with different town boards over the weeks ahead, covering a lot of topics like the other aspects of our development agreement that we want to just review as we're doing this new fiscal impact analysis. One of the things we're offering is to is to give the town an easement to access the river through your meadow. You know, you bought the, what we call the Reese Meadow, the twelve point five acres that the Reese family still owned in front of Spooky World. The town now owns that as, as open space. And that backs up to our land that then has the canoe launch. And one of the things we have put together is actually an easement plan. I can show that to you in three weeks when we come. That will allow folks from town, if the town ever builds a road and a parking area down on that meadow to, to access the Asabed River. And that had never been part of the development agreement or any obligation we had, but when we made the deal with N R P group to come in, we told them that, that canoe launch was not theirs exclusively and they understand that. So the setting is just beautiful and if you have a chance to take a walk around and even walk down to the the river, I invite you to do so because it's, it's very beautiful. So pleased that it fits within this wonderful setting. Thank, thank you for having us and we'll look forward to coming back in three weeks. Okay. Right, take care. Bye-bye. Well, we'll listen to more later, I guess. I don't know. We'll have to see what it looks like before we determine their chances. You're muted, Tim.
You know, the value of the residential units may be significant, but if the tax rate is half. It'll be interesting to see what the numbers would look like if eventually it had been built out as commercial.
If it's commercial, you're not going to have a child impact where you will with a residential unit.
Particularly if they're two-bedroom.
Exactly. And, and owner, owner-owned.
Yeah.
You know?
We have to, we should probably sometime discuss how we feel about child impact. We should be encouraging it, not diminishing it.
How, so promoting, promoting, this is a, a net positive for the, for child?
Well, I think, I think that I feel like one of our goals should be to attract more children, more young.
Okay.
Try to, to kind of balance out the demographic in town because over the years it's become very heavily weighted towards, towards elderly people.
Right.
Of the forty towns in Southern Worcester County in the Regional Planning Commission's district, we're the second oldest after Westbrookfield.
If you get rid of me and you.
It won't help that much, Tim.
Well, it's a question of our, is, is there something that we're doing that's causing that or contributing to that?
We're aging, yeah.
We're aging in Two Acres zoning.
Yep.
I think it's interesting that we were talking about how to get more affordable housing in town, right, for a variety of reasons.
Okay.
And, and we came up with, we, we were kind of heading towards an understanding that one of the only ways to do that is to get multifamily, whether it's duplexes or multifamily
Right.
Housing because you can spread the costs of the, you know, service, the utilities and water and whatever over a larger number of units to get the cost down. So you know, I was kind of thinking, we're talking about maybe duplexes that are at three hundred or something or under three hundred. If we did that, these guys are going a step further than duplexes. They're talking about townhomes, which is going to be, you know, ten units all attached to each other, which should be even cheaper, but they're also thinking they're going to be four hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Right, so you know, if it, if, if they were going to be in the twos, you could say, wow, this is what we wanted. It may not be in the location we wanted and maybe more units attached to each other than we wanted. But it's what we wanted. But, you know, we may be, what I think we were talking about, what I was thinking about may be impossible, which is to have no more than two units attached and have them in a better location closer to the town center and the schools and things that you'd like to have. Both young families and seniors have access to without having to get into a car.
You know, I, I volunteered once to talk to Kathy Jubert about their duplexes because they have a number in Northborough that popped up. I, and I didn't do that. I'll get in touch with her because it'd be interesting to see what, what they sold for, what they produced for kids.
Yeah.
And whether, whether they had an affordable component to, to any of those that was constructed. That, I think, you know, Jay's right. We we need, we walk this balance here where you need critical mass in the school system in order to, to keep it functional and viable and and I suppose we could work with Margaret and the superintendent at some point, maybe, you know, get them to participate in a meeting this to talk about numbers. I know, I mean, Eloise ought to have some handle on children under six, you know, and tell us what the, the, the numbers look like in terms of the possibility of filling up some of the classrooms because we don't want to go backwards on this either.
Agreed. I mean, I don't think that the, the, this doesn't scare me yet. The thing that, that gives me pause is that they're dismissing affordable part of it straight out the gate. And I know that that's, you know, typical developer speak. But I just, I don't want to see us go backwards, you know? Yeah, they put, had a big impact because they put an apartment building down there, but it's an opportunity that benefited the both of us, them and us.
Right.
Well, why should the town sacrifice all of its gain? Because they want it, you know what I mean? So I'm not convinced that we can give up on the affordable part of it just yet.
Well, let's say we have a cushion of, of forty units. If you give up four, you're giving up ten percent. I mean, you can't do that too many times and next thing you know, we're back where we started, so.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly.
Is it right that, that we're getting credit for all of the rentals? So.
No, all of the rentals in that one, those two buildings, there's eighty-four buildings, eighty-four units in those two structures and, and we're getting credit for all eighty-four because twenty-one are affordable. The other, what are there, six structures? The other four don't have any affordable component.
Okay.
So these, these two units are on a separate lot and, and then went through the, the LIP program, you know, essentially to become counted on the subsidized housing inventory.
But is there, how, how much risk is there that they won't be able to fill those units and that they'll revert to market rate?
Well.
Well, if you don't, why, you don't know.
Rhodes has no, Rhodes has no problem renting those units over there. And, and I've been inspecting a, a project in Douglas with God knows how many. They're duplexes. But there's going to be maybe a hundred units when they're done. And, and it's a affordable project and, and they're moving everything as fast as they build it.
And these are sales or rentals?
These are sales down there.
But you know, I want to, I want to point out that we have changed every damn thing on this project except the gas station. Everything. You know, you've got to remember that. They keep pushing and pushing and pushing to get their way on everything.
Did the, is the new, the new development near, what's not the CBS, but the Walgreens that closed down on eighty-five and Marlboro? Is that a C C R C like we were originally going to build?
The Odison?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I think it's over fifty-five. But I don't think it's.
Where is it?
I don't know about that because they were showing off their chef and stuff. I think I get the impression it was a transitional.
Where in Marlboro?
Hudson.
Hudson.
Oh, yeah.
Is it like the Willows?
Yeah.
I don't know. I can't, I don't know.
I mean, my sense with the Willows was a sort of a high-end.
It is.
But it, but it's assisted living, not a, not as much of a C C R C, but more of a Whitney Place type.
Well, I've been in a few of those lately because of my friends of that age.
Your older friends, yeah.
Ninety-seven, turn ninety-seven. Some of those are disgusting. You know, they looked lovely on the ground floor.
Yeah.
To go upstairs. And it's like they're living in a closet.
Really?
That, the one I have been in recently is what's it called? I can't remember my name most days. The one on Lincoln Street, Christopher House. You know, the one near the, the fire station on Lincoln and Pleasant? In Marlboro?
I don't go to Marlboro.
Huh? You don't go to Marlboro?
Not anymore, no.
Tom does. Pleasant Street. Before you get to Lincoln, Christopher House is on the left. It is lovely looking from the outside. It is lovely on the ground floor. It is disgusting. It's like putting a person in a sardine can to wait to die. I'd rather be in a tent.
That's why we need, need some nice affordable senior housing in the center of Berlin.
I've got affordable housing, almost affordable.
Walk to nineteen Carter with your, you know, walker and with the tennis balls.
You know something? When I was in the hospital a couple of months ago, I knew what was wrong with me, but they were thinking I had a stroke and I didn't. And they sent a poor woman down to me to teach me how to use a walker. I, I almost wrapped her with it.
So I, I'm just reading, I'm just reading about the Odison. It's, it's, it's cleverly worded, so I don't think it's as is all encompassing as like the Willows or those guys. It talks about independent studio, one, two-bedroom floor plans, signature dining opportunities. There's programs to help residents, residents age successfully. Hospitality-focused teams by offering concierge service, concierge services. Underground parking. Services like housekeeping and laundry.
Everything at a cost.
Well, yeah. But it doesn't sound like there's, you know, a background behind it that's like a, you know, retire, and I, a nursing home or something like that. You know what I'm saying?
It sounds like Whitney Place without Beaumont.
What?
It sounds like Whitney Place without Beaumont.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
So I wonder how much it costs to have them help you age because, you know, when I was younger, I wanted to get old faster.
Well, Whitney was.
I'm doing well.
Wanted to go drinking.
Whitney was forty-two, forty-two hundred a month or something?
Is it really? Wow.
What is it?
Whitney was in the, in the low fours, it seemed when I was finishing up and that was a while ago.
Yeah, it's called independent living. They're calling it independent living, so.
Yeah, that sounds like Whitney.
Yep.
So yeah, chatting with the school department, once they get settled in for the year. From the school committee or something like that.
Yeah, because this is kind of, I mean, I, I think that whole development down there is maybe a gateway into the community, like people living in the multifamilies that like it, eventually they'll settle in town. So for example, if you set it all up to be over fifty-five, you're going to get even more old people like us settling in town, which from a demographic standpoint is probably not what we should be trying to do.
It'll be interesting to see if N R P has any idea about age ranges of the folks that have already moved in to see what the impact that's going to be on our numbers.
Yeah, that would be interesting.
I think that Chris had said maybe three or four kids in the school system at this point, but he was, I don't think he had a firm number.
You'd think we'd get a lot of young people because if you look at the pictures online and it shows the Asabed River runs right up to the parking lot.
There's a little canal through the back courtyard where you can just hop right on.
It's like Venice in South Berlin.
Yeah, because everything's dried up.
Yeah.
Do you want a motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Second.
Well, one question before we do that. Did we agree, Tim, did we agree that Tim was going to be our C M P R C rep? Do we have to vote on that, right?
He's already our rep. It's the alternate.
I bet, yeah, I need to be appointed again as a delegate.
Does the selectmen appoint you or do we?
No, we do. So somebody can make a motion.
I move that we appoint Tim Wheeler as a representative to the C M P R C.
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion? No. I have to do a voice vote, sorry.
Okay.
Janet?
Hi.
Jay?
Hi.
Tim?
Oh, hi.
Hi. So it's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Tim, for your service.
Now, can we, can we have an alternate from the planning board or does it need to come from the select board?
It comes from the selectmen. If you want to go to meetings anytime, I mean, I should, why not? I'll try to make a habit of sending the quarterly announcements to everybody. Because then you'd see what
Yeah.
The topic is this. Right now, they're, they're doing a series. Yeah, because we had a quarterly meeting earlier in September and it has a lot to do with equity and, and in housing and planning and that sort of stuff. I mean, they, they, they took heart with the some of the issues that countries face and then said, why don't we address whether we're being equitable in the distribution of our services to all the people that live within the region. And I think they're going to do that again at the next quarterly meeting as well, so.
Yeah.
But I'll, I should, I'll send those notices out.
Do you have to have a Zoom meeting when you have that?
Yeah. With about fifty-five people.
Good God.
And it worked, you know, it was good. We had three different speakers. That, you know, they did a good job talking about some of the efforts they're making to try to be more inclusive and stuff, so. But, you know, in the fall, it was about the census. Sometimes it's like a But, you know, in the fall, it was about the census. Um, sometimes it, like I said, it's about the tip. Um, so it, you know, it varies a lot. And, and uh, people always come, well, Jay, you've gone to some of the meet, you, you went to some, yeah.
Yeah, so if you needed a backup, um, and, you know, I'm willing to do that. Unless these planning, unless the select board wants to have someone.
And we only spend less than nine hundred dollars. I mean, right now, Margaret was working with them on this submission that we just, that she just finished. We're working on the Center Village Study. Um, they're helping us with ADA. Um, they helped us with complete streets. Margaret, if she was, wants to chime in, there, there's a whole series of things they're working with us on.
Through the chair, they're, they're absolutely invaluable. I, I don't know what small towns like Berlin would do without them. You know, we have, we have limited capacity and they are always there to guide us, even on short notice. Like we, like we had with this particular grant application, their, um, their resources are incredible for small town.
For, for nine hundred dollars. Bargain all the way around.
Definitely a bargain.
Scottish price.
Anyway, aye.
Wait a minute. So we do have a motion in a second. So now I will call any other discussion about closing this meeting. No, hearing none. We'll have to do a voice vote and because Tim jumped in, Tim. You have to vote again, Tim.
Aye.
Janet?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
And Tom, aye. Unanimous vote, we can close this hearing.